Over there, he's like one of my faves because he's so quiet, nice and chill.
April 16th, Worksday Session will begin. We'll start with an Arbor Day proclamation. Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good evening, everyone. Whereas in 1872, J. Sterling Morton proposed to the Nebraska Board of Agriculture that a special day be set aside for the planting of trees. And whereas this holiday called Arbor Day was first observed with the planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska and is now observed throughout the nation and the world. Trees can reduce the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, cut heating and cooling costs, moderate the temperature, clean the air, and provide a habitat for wildlife. And whereas trees in our city increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of business areas, beautify our community, and are a source of joy and spiritual renewal. And whereas the city of Southgate has been recognized since 1994 as a Tree City USA by the National Arbor Day Foundation and desires to continue its tree planting ways. Therefore, as Mayor of the city of Southgate, I do proclaim that Friday, April 25, 2025, is Arbor Day in the city of Southgate, and urge our residents to support efforts to care for our trees and woodlands and to support our city's forestry program. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. We'll move on to official reports. Mr. Mayor.
Thank you again. In the early hours of Thursday, April 3, this community experienced a horrific house explosion on the corner of Edison and Burns. The home was owned by Amber and Paul Benedict. Unfortunately, Amber did not survive her injuries, and Paul was hospitalized with numerous medical issues. Since then, Mr. Benedict has been improving, but his recovery will be a very slow one. I want to thank our first responders who worked diligently to rescue Mr. and Mrs. Benedict. This situation, the situation was very unstable and extremely dangerous when they appeared on the site. In the aftermath of this tragedy, it has become apparent that many neighbors have been emotionally affected dealing with the incident. I know we talked at the budget workshop, and I know I talked specifically to Councilman Roush a couple days after the event, and he had heard the same thing, that many were dealing with emotional issues as a result of the explosion. So we reached out to the Guidance Center, and they hosted a community gathering on the evening of April 12 for any resident who was having difficulty as a result of the explosion. Several neighbors did participate, but the Guidance Center will remain available for those who were not able to make that meeting. So please, if you know anyone who is still experiencing emotional stress as a result of this tragic event, please contact the Guidance Center. Their number is 734-287-1500. 734-287-1500. I'd also like to thank all of the residents and friends who came out to support the Benedict family at the candlelight vigil that was held this past Saturday, or past Sunday evening for Amber. Special thanks to Pastor Billy Walker of the Calvary Church, as well as his son-in-law Eric for providing a special reading. And the pastor's daughter Kaylee also ended the vigil with a beautiful hymn. Please keep these Southgate families in your prayers. With the ongoing construction taking place in front of our municipal building, there was some concern as to whether or not the annual Memorial Day observation will take place in front of our veterans' memorial. According to our city engineers, the work scheduled for the library parking lot area will not start until early June, so our memorial service will indeed take place as scheduled on Thursday, May 22. And as we look to the summer, our annual Heritage Days celebration is about six weeks away. It's hard to believe. It's important to note that we have moved the dates to our, to the first weekend in June rather than Father's Day weekend. This will prevent an overlap with the River View Festival. This year's Heritage Days will take place from Thursday, June 5 to Sunday, June 8. ITC Holdings and Wayne County Parks will be hosting a free marshmallow drop this Friday, April 18 at Elizabeth Park in Trenton. The festivities will start at 9:00 a.m. Thousands of marshmallows will be dropped from a helicopter to be gathered and turned in for a prize. Children who are also advised to look for a special colored marshmallow to win an amazing gift, according to the flyer. So happy Easter to everyone, and I hope that it's a special time with family and friends. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Madam Pluck.
Thank you. There is a school election on Tuesday, May 6. You can vote either absentee ballot or go to the polls on that day, and I encourage everybody to vote.
Thanks.
That's it.
Mr. Treger.
Hi. No report. Thank you.
Councilman Erich.
Madam Chair, I have a Parks and Recreation Commission meeting update. We met on April 9. We will be once again hosting the Downriver Senior Olympics, August 11 through 15. So Southgate will be hosting, and you know, other cities in the Downriver area will be participating. But Shuffleboard will be added back to the events per request. Lincoln Park is actually going to host next year, and we are working on securing the locations for the following four years. It would be great if we could rotate and share. That would be awesome. Few upcoming events. April 26, we have Little League Opening Day. April 26 and 27, the Little Caesars Amateur Hockey League Spring Tournament. And May 2nd through 4th is the 49th Annual Ice Spectacular Let's Dance. And then, as Mayor Kuspa mentioned, the 49th Annual Heritage Days will be coming up that first weekend of June. That's all I have.
Thank you, Councilman Roush.
No report.
Councilman Graziani.
Nothing for my assignments right now, but we do have a BZA meeting next month on Monday, May 12 at 5:30. So I'll report back if anything noteworthy comes out of that.
Okay.
The school board did meet. They honored a bunch of their students. The Winter Titan Student Athletes Award were given out. They also paid, honored also to the varsity wrestling squad. They were the Downriver League and District Champions. They also honored state qualifiers and places for skating, DECA, wrestling, and robotics. We have a very talented group of students in a lot of different categories here. On the public safety side of things, as the mayor mentioned about the explosion that happened on April 3, both chiefs, police and fire thanked their staffs that were on call that day. Very swift action and response. The official cause is still under investigation. And on the police side of things, going forward, trainings are continuing. Atlas trainings for lockdowns for these schools are due to start in the next couple of weeks.
Councilman Ayers-Rice.
Thanks, Madam Chair. The Planning Commission did meet on Monday, April 14. We went over the master plan. Again, we're, this ongoing for the year plan. So the section we worked on was speaking to the corridors within Southgate, and those corridors would be Eureka Road, Dixtealito Road, Northline Road, and Fort Street. To clarify, corridors are strips or areas that are linear, typically a roadway with high traffic consisting of road and surrounding land on either side. So just to put that in perspective of what that is. We talked about designs for each corridor that would be unique to that specific area. As you can see right now in Eureka, we have, you know, restaurants, and we might want to have some walking paths and things of that nature to be able to get back and forth down Eureka that's more pedestrian-friendly. We also spoke on goals on a variety of topics such as transportation choices, improved pedestrian experience, and diversity of housing choices, and encouraging public art. So more discussion will take place regarding the design and goals for the corridors in our next month's meeting.
Thanks, Madam Chair. Thank you, Councilman Galak.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The DDA did not meet last month, but I would like to give a special thank you out to Julie Goddard, our Recreation Director, who has stepped up in the interim to assume some of the duties of the DDA Director who has resigned just recently. Secondly, I'd like to congratulate Councilman Ayers-Rice. She was recently voted as President starting in July 1 of the Southgate Rotary. Awesome achievement. Thank you for stepping up for that position.
Thank you.
And then lastly, as usual, the mayor was very humble in his comments about the vigil when he in fact coordinated and assisted with the emceeing, if you would call it, of the entire evening. And so, you know, as a Southgate resident who didn't know the Benedicks, but I showed up to show my support for the family, there was over 300 folks there by my count. Channel 2, Channel 4, and Channel 7 all thought it was newsworthy to send a crew and reporters who actually interviewed a lot of our residents. So special thanks to the mayor for coordinating with the families, the vigil. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Marsh, please, for the agenda.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Tonight, the first thing you'll see on the agenda is regarding a closed session. We'll have John Gilley. That's the attorney representing the city of Southgate on behalf of MML, the city's insurance, regarding some pending litigation. Then going on to considerations of bids, the first item, we have, well, you have two items on there, and the first item is regarding the city hall roof replacement. Royal Roofing Company provided the lowest of three bids received, and their bid does fall in line with the projected cost of this project. If you recall, we reserved ARPA funds last year in December for this, for this project. The contractor plans to begin the project in the fall and have it completed by November 15. Are there any questions regarding the roof replacement? Okay, so the next, the next is the bid results for the Trenton Road right-of-way and ditch improvement. Currently, the sidewalk on Trenton Road on the west side goes up to Kiwanis Park, but then it stops there. It doesn't go all the way to Leroy. So this project would actually be to continue that sidewalk along Kiwanis Park and actually replace the approach, or put in an approach coming off of Dix, I'm sorry, not Dix, off of Trenton Road into Kiwanis Park, and to do the ditch there as well. This project, let's see, Royal Cement Corporation provided the lowest of nine bids received. Are there any questions on this item? Okay, going on to Communications Day, the first item is a request to waive the bid and approve SAC construction to perform sanitary sewer lining on a portion of the 16,000 block of Kennebec. There is currently a section of road there failing, and it needs to be reconstructed. This section of road is failing because there's a joint in the sanitary sewer that's failed. And so prior to any kind of road reconstruction, that sewer has to be, has to be repaired. The administration is recommending that the bid be waived, and that's because SAC has successfully performed emergency repairs in the past, and they're able to begin the work as soon as possible. Are there any questions regarding this item? Next is a request to waive the bid and lease a postage machine for five years from Quiident for a total of $15,708.60. Quiident is the provider of our current postage machine, and while we're requesting to waive the Southgate's bid process, this lease does fall under a source welcome, a cooperative purchasing contract. Are there any questions from council? Okay, seeing none. The next item is a request to waive the bid and extend the contract with Highway Maintenance Construction Company for the 2025 Spray Patch Program. They've been the city's awarded contractor since 2014, and they've met the engineers' expectations during that time. The proposed renewal does include a 2.63% increase, and that's applied by raising the per-ton cost to $390 per ton from $380 per ton. That previous rate of $380 a ton was established back in 2023. Are there any questions from council? Seeing none. The next is a request to have the city-approved General Carpenter Rally Point Partners complete repairs to the North Point subdivision sign on Suffolk. That sign was damaged by a vehicle earlier this year. The at-fault driver's insurance will be billed for those repairs. Any questions regarding this item? Seeing none. The next is a request to have the city-approved electrical repair contractor, Reinelectric, perform the needed electrical improvements associated with the CDBG City Hall project. The electrical lines that were out in front of City Hall, they had to be removed to make way for the road and parking improvements. So the administration's recommending that Reine be approved to reinstall those electrical lines along with the new lighting that's going to go along the walkway. Are there any questions regarding this item? Seeing none. The next two items are associated with contract extensions for parks and municipal property mowing. In both cases, the administration's recommending waiving the bid and extending the current contractors for the first cuts of the season. We do, we're actually currently accepting bids for these services, but the bid opening is not until April 25, and the earliest award will be at the first meeting in May. Therefore, we're requesting that the current, we request that our current contractors provide quotes for the first couple of cuts of the year. The first item you'll see on the agenda here is for Davie, who was handling Kiwanis, Cobb, Lions Park, and Rotary Park. They provided a quote to do the spring cleanup and the first two cuts of the year. Are there any questions regarding the item regarding Davie's? Okay, so then the last item is the contract, is the contract with U.S. Lawns. They currently cut all the other municipal properties. They've agreed to continue to cut at $1,650 per week, which will be paid out of the general and streets funds. Are there any questions regarding the U.S. Lawns item? Seeing none. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll reconvene at 7:00.
And then lastly, as usual, the mayor was very humble in his comments about the vigil, when he in fact coordinated and assisted with the emceeing, if you would call it, of the entire evening. And so, you know, as a Southgate resident who didn't know the Benedicks, but I showed up to show my support for the family, there was over 300 folks there, by my count. Channel two, channel four, and channel seven all thought it was newsworthy to send a crew and reporters, who actually interviewed a lot of our residents. So, special thanks to the mayor for coordinating with the families of the vigil. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Marsh, please, for the agenda.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Tonight, the first thing you'll see on the agenda is regarding a closed session. We'll have John Gilley, that's the attorney representing the city of Southgate on behalf of MML, the city's insurance, regarding some pending litigation. Then going on to considerations of bids, the first item, we have, well, you have two items on there, and the first item is regarding the city hall roof replacement. Royal Roofing Company provided the lowest of three bids received, and their bid does fall in line with the projected cost of this project. If you recall, we reserved ARPA funds last year in December for this project. The contractor plans to begin the project in the fall and have it completed by November 15th. Are there any questions regarding the roof replacement? Okay, so the next, the next is the bid results for the Trenton Road right-of-way and ditch improvement. Currently, the sidewalk on Trenton Road on the west side goes up to Kiwanis Park, but then it stops there, it doesn't go all the way to Leroy. So, this project would actually be to continue that sidewalk along Kiwanis Park and actually replace the approach, or put in an approach coming off of Dix, I'm sorry, not Dix, off of Trenton Road into Kiwanis Park, and to do the ditch there as well. This project, let's see, Royal Cement Corporation provided the lowest of nine bids received. Are there any questions on this item? Okay, going on to Communications Day, the first item is a request to waive the bid and approve SAC construction to perform sanitary sewer lining on a portion of the 16,000 block of Kennebec. There is currently a section of road there failing, and it needs to be reconstructed. This section of road is failing because there's a joint in the sanitary sewer that's failed, and so prior to any kind of road reconstruction, that sewer has to be repaired. The administration is recommending that the bid be waived, and that's because SAC has successfully performed emergency repairs in the past, and they're able to begin the work as soon as possible. Are there any questions regarding this item? Next is a request to waive the bid and lease a postage machine for five years from Quiident for a total of $15,708.60. Quiident is the provider of our current postage machine, and while we're requesting to waive the Southgate's bid process, this lease does fall under a source welcome, a cooperative purchasing contract. Are there any questions from council? Okay, seeing none. The next item is a request to waive the bid and extend the contract with Highway Maintenance Construction Company for the 2025 spray patch program. They've been the city's awarded contractor since 2014, and they've met the engineers' expectations during that time. The proposed renewal does include a 2.63% increase, and that's applied by raising the per-ton cost to $390 per ton from $380 per ton. That previous rate of $380 per ton was established back in 2023. Are there any questions from council? Okay, seeing none. The next is a request to have the city-approved General Carpenter, Rally Point Partners, complete repairs to the North Point subdivision sign on Suffolk. That sign was damaged by a vehicle earlier this year. The at-fault driver's insurance will be billed for those repairs. Any questions regarding this item? Okay, seeing none. The next is a request to have the city-approved electrical repair contractor, Rainey Electric, perform the needed electrical improvements associated with the CDBG City Hall project. The electrical lines that were out in front of City Hall, they had to be removed to make way for the road and parking improvements, so the administration's recommending that Rainey be approved to reinstall those electrical lines along with the new lighting that's going to go along the walkway. Are there any questions regarding this item? Okay, seeing none. The next two items are associated with contract extensions for parks and municipal property mowing. In both cases, the administration's recommending waiving the bid and extending the current contractors for the first cuts of the season. We do, we're actually currently accepting bids for these services, but the bid opening is not until April 25th, and the earliest award will be at the first meeting in May. Therefore, we're requesting that the current, we request that our current contractors provide quotes for the first couple of cuts of the year. The first item you'll see on the agenda here is for Davie, who was handling Kiwanis, Cobb, Lions Park, and Rotary Park. They provided a quote to do the spring cleanup and the first two cuts of the year. Are there any questions regarding the item regarding Davie's? Okay, so then the last item is the contract with U.S. Lawns. They currently cut all the other municipal properties. They've agreed to continue to cut at $1,650 per week, which will be paid out of the general and streets funds. Are there any questions regarding the U.S. Lawns item? Okay, seeing none. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll reconvene at 7:00.[344.03]
For, for, um, the election, for inspector. Yeah.
Madam Chairman.
Councilman Roush.
I make a motion, we close the, uh, public hearing. Close session, I'm sorry.
Support. The motion by Roush, supported by Ayers Reese, roll call vote, Madam Clerk.
Councilman Irage.
Yes.
Councilman Golic.
Yes.
Councilman Ayers Reese.
Present.
Councilman Roush.
Yes.
Councilman Graziani.
Yes.
Councilman Caspa.
Yes. The regular meeting is resumed. Uh, we have no scheduled person in the audience. First item under consideration of bids is a letter from the mayor regarding the city hall roof replacement. Madam Clerk.
It is recommended by Matt Verhey of Garland Company, the city of Southgate roofing expert, and I concur that we award this bid for the city hall roof replacement, sections one and two to Royal Roofing Company of Lake Orion in the amount of $462,100 plus 10% contingency of $46,210 for a total amount of $508,310. Royal Roofing was the low bidder, meaning specifications. There are adequate funds available for this project in the general fund. Your favorable consideration to this recommendation would be greatly appreciated.
The pledge of the council.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Irage.
I move that we award the bid to Royal Roofing Company, Inc. in Lake Orion, Michigan for the city hall roof replacement. Base bid for sections one and two plus the alternate add in the amount of $462,100 plus 10% contingency of $46,210 for a total of $508,310.
Support.
Motion by Ayers, supported by Roush, any discussion, any objection? Motion carries. Next is a letter from the mayor regarding the Trenton Road pathway and ditch improvements. Madam Clerk.
It is recommended by the city engineer, and I concur that we award this bid for the Trenton Road pathway and ditch improvements to Royal Cement Corporation of Southgate in the amount of $176,919.40 for the base price plus 10% contingency of $17,691.94 for a total amount of $194,611.34. Royal Cement was the low bidder, meaning specifications. There are adequate funds available for this project in the street funds and are derived from Act 51 funds. Your favorable consideration to this recommendation would be greatly appreciated.
What's the pledge of the council?
Madam.
Councilwoman Ayers Reese.
I make a motion, we award the bid to Royal Cement Corporation for the Trenton Road pathway and ditch improvements project in the amount of $176,919.40 for the base bid plus 10% contingency of $17,691.94 for a total amount of $194,611.34.
Support.
Motion by Ayers Reese, supported by Golic, any discussion, any objection? Motion carries. There are no scheduled hearings. First item under communications A is a letter from the mayor regarding the approved quote for sanitary sewer lining. Madam Clerk.
It is recommended by the city engineer, and I concur that the city waive the bid process and approve the quote for the Kennebec Avenue sanitary sewer lining from SAC Construction of O'Fallon, Missouri in the amount of $32,430 plus an additional $2,700 for six protruding traps totaling $35,130. Funds for this purchase are available in the water sewer fund budget. Your favorable consideration of this matter is requested.
What's the pledge of the council?
Madam Chair.
Councilman Golic. Or Council, what? Councilman.
That's fine.
Go ahead.
I move that we waive the city bid process and approve quote for Kennebec Avenue sanitary sewer lining from SAC Construction LLC in the amount of $32,430 plus $2,700 for six protruding taps for a total contract amount of $35,130.
Support.
Motion by Ayers, supported by Ayers Reese, any discussion, any objection? Motion carries. Next is a letter from the mayor regarding the approved postage machine lease. Madam Clerk.
It is recommended by the Assistant City Administrator Finance Director, and I concur that the city waive the bid process and approve the five-year lease for the city's postage, postage machine with Quaden Leasing USA Incorporated. Quaden is our current postage machine vendor. The new lease terms are $261.81 a month, $3,141.72 annually under the Sourcewell Contract Number 011322QDT. Funds for this purchase are available in the general fund budget. Your favorable consideration of this matter is requested.
What's the pledge of the council?
Madam Chair.
Councilman Golic.
I'll make a motion that we waive the city bid process and approve a five-year lease agreement with Quadian Leasing USA Incorporated for a postage machine at the amount of $261.81 per month or a total amount of $15,708.60 under the Sourcewell Contract Number 011322-QDT.
Support.
Motion by Golic, supported by Roush, any discussion, any objection? Motion carries. Next is a letter from the mayor regarding the approved contract extension for 2025 spray patch repair. Madam Clerk.
It is recommended by the city engineer, and I concur with his recommendation to approve this contract extension at a 2.63% increase to the prior year's costs of $380 per ton to $390 per ton with highway maintenance and construction company for the 2025 spray patch repair program. Adequate funds are available in the major and local street funds. Your favorable consideration of this matter is greatly appreciated.
What's the pledge of the council?
Madam Chair.
Councilman Ayers Reese.
I make a motion that we waive the city bid process and approve the contract extension with Highway Maintenance and Construction Company for the 2025 spray patch repair program at a rate of $390 per ton unit price.
Support.
Motion by Ayers Reese, supported by Ayers, any discussion, any objection? Motion carries. Next is a letter from the mayor regarding the approved proposal for repairs to North Point subdivision entrance sign. Madam Clerk.
It is recommended by the city administrator, and I concur with his recommendation to approve the proposal from Rally Point Partners for repairs to the North Point subdivision entrance sign in the amount of $14,182.40. Rally Point Partners is the city's approved contractor for construction services. Adequate funds are available, available in the general fund. Costs will be billed to the responsible party for these repairs. Your favorable consideration of this matter is greatly appreciated.
What's the pledge of the council?
Madam Chairman.
Councilman Roush.
I make a motion, we approve the proposal from Rally Point Partners in the amount of $14,182.40 for repairs to the North Point subdivision entrance sign and bill the responsible party for the reimbursement of the cost.
Support. Motion by Roush, supported by Ayers Reese, any discussion, any objection? Motion carries.
Madam Chair. Just before you go on, you know, a lot of these costs would be incurred by an HOA in some of our newer subdivisions. North Point does not have an HOA, and that's why we're going in this direction. So most of the entrances in some of our newer subs, it would be the responsibility of the HOA, but because it didn't have an HOA at that time, the city assumes, assumes the responsibility, but of course will bill the, the responsible party.
Thank you. Next is a letter from the mayor regarding the approved proposal for electrical improvements for the city hall CDBG parking and ADA improvements. Madam Clerk.
It is recommended by the city engineer, and I concur with his recommendation to approve the proposal from Reine Electric, the city's approved contractor for the city hall CDBG parking and ADA improvements project. The total amount for electrical improvements is $35,625. Funds are available in the street funds budget. Your favorable consideration of this matter is requested.
What's the pledge of the council?
Chair.
Councilman Irage.
I move that we approve the proposal from Reine Electric in the amount of $35,625 for electrical improvements with alternate ballard lighting related to the city hall CDBG parking and ADA improvements project.
Support.
Motion by Ayers, supported by Roush, any discussion, any objection? Motion carries. Next is a letter from the mayor regarding the approved contract extension for parks mowing and cleanup. Madam Clerk.
It is recommended by the Parks and Recreation Director, and I concur with the recommendation to waive the bid process and approve the contract extension with Davy Tree Expert Company for parks maintenance in the amount of $5,349 for a period, period of April 17th to May 4th, 2025. This extension is short-term as this will be bid out in conjunction with the lawn, grass, and rubbish contract. Adequate funds are available in the Parks and Recreation Millage Fund. Your favorable consideration of this matter is greatly appreciated.
What's the pledge of the council?
Madam Chair.
Councilman Ayers Reese.
I make a motion that we waive the city bid process and approve a contract extension with Davy Tree Expert Company for parks maintenance in the amount of $5,349 for the period of April 17th through May 4th, 2025.
Support.
Motion by Ayers Reese, supported by Ayers, any discussion, any objection? Motion carries. Last is a letter from the mayor regarding the approved contract extension for municipal property mowing. Madam Clerk.
It is recommended by Parks and Recreation Director, and I concur with the recommendation to waive the bid process and approve the contract extension with U.S. Lawns for municipal property mowing in the amount of $1,650 per week for the month of May 2025. This extension is short-term as this will be bid out in conjunction with the parks maintenance contract. Adequate funds are available in the general fund and street funds. Your favorable consideration of this matter is greatly appreciated.
What's the pledge of the council?
Madam Chair.
Councilman Golic.
I'll make a motion that we waive the city bid process and approve, approve a contract extension with U.S. Lawns for municipal property mowing in the amount of $1,650 per week for the month of May 2025.
Support.
Motion by Golic, supported by Ayers Reese, any discussion, any objection? Motion carries. There are no items under communications B, there's no ordinances. Is there any old business the council would like to discuss? Seeing none, is there any new business the council would like to discuss? Seeing none, we'll move on to unscheduled person in the audience. If you'd like to address council, come to the podium, state your name and address, and you'll have three minutes.
Thank you. My name is Sharon Irvine, Superintendent for Southgate Community Schools. It's 13940 Leroy, Southgate. I'm here today as part of our information campaign to share with you the objectives on our special election that's moving forward. So, um, in 2020, the Southgate community approved a bond, and it was a very generous bond. It was an extraordinary investment in schools. Um, over the last five years, because of really quality returns, high returns, we've been able to accelerate the projects that we've been able to do. We've also been able to stretch that money quite a bit. So, some of the things that we've done with that bond that were not scheduled to be done includes all of the playground replacements of all of our elementary schools. It includes the turf, um, baseball and softball fields. They include the parking lot behind that we've just been able to build. Um, all of these were ways that we made good use of the money that were provided to us by the very generous, um, community members of Southgate. We are now in a position to, um, go back to the community and say by locking in the current rate, no increase, uh, to the millage, we are able to expand what we've done and continue that on to do some significant cleanup on the exterior of Asher, the current Asher building, which includes, um, moving, putting a, uh, you, a large kind of circular drive around, um, Asher to park buses in the back, so all of that will be rehabilitated. We understand also the impact of visually what that looks like for, um, the large development, uh, that's right across the street. We want to make sure that that entire property uh, is fit for the families that we hope to draw into that community. So we, this is a zero tax increase, as I said. The second, um, item on there is the non-homestead millage. Currently, all businesses are assessed in 18 mills, um, that goes to schools. And that's true pretty much the entire county. It's through, true most way through the state. There are very few communities that in fact do not tax, um, their businesses that way. It is currently in place at 18 mills.